I'd like to call the special meeting of Raton City Commission to order, please. Could we have roll call, Michael Ann?
Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Proton Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
Commissioner Honeyfield.
Do you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving right into, we have no committee reports tonight, so moving right into action items. Action item 4A, deliberate an act on proposal submitted by Ramel Family Farms for mutual termination of lease and associated agreements, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, before you is a letter from Ramel Family Farms dated July 2nd, 2025, with the requested response by July 15th, 2025, to mutually terminate their existing lease with the city. The city recommends that the commission accept the offer to vacate the Armex property and greenhouse, subject to the city attorney following up with Ramel Family Farms, to formalize the agreement in writing and to establish parameters for both parties.
Comments, questions? Comments or questions?
I have some questions. May I approach? Good evening, Mayor and esteemed Commissioners. I'm not here just for myself. I'm here sort of as a representative of some concerned citizens. And I might add that the first retails, I moved here at the end of January and the big, or the beginning of February, those two days, and the first store I went to was the heirloom shop. And I realized at that moment that I had come to my place. I sort of felt at home. So I've been following this issue quite closely, and I've been discussing it with a lot of my friends, and we've come to some questions that we'd like to ask. The exclusion of the heirloom job from job counts, heirloom shop from job counts. City Manager Mestes has referenced Section 115.28 of Ordinance 903 to exclude affiliated businesses like the heirloom shop from job calculations. However, the PPA Section G explicitly includes all affiliates and contractors. So how does the city legally justify interpreting an old fee ordinance to override the specific job inclusion language in a more recent and specialized LEEDA agreement?
Well, first, that item is not on our agenda, and we can only discuss items that are on our agenda. We're here to discuss the letter that was submitted.
Oh, only the letter?
And then the introduction of another ordinance. We are bound by what's on the agenda.
So I can't ask any questions about how things came about and how they happened and the history of why we're here today? Is that?
The last meeting, we got together. Since then, mediation was proposed. Mediation was accepted. Then we received a letter stating they wanted to terminate the agreement.
I see. So that's it? I'm gonna have to sit down because all of my questions are off the agenda.
I would just state that I know for a fact, because I've researched it, I can say and ask anything I want up here.
You sure can.
You don't have to answer.
That's right. That's correct.
But I can ask anything I want.
Absolutely.
Congratulations on keeping this town stagnant. Thank you very much. Your word, Joe.
All right, since we're discussing the letter, I have three items I want to discuss. Based on the letter received on July 2nd, the mutual termination letter states that the city claimed Ramel Family Farms ended the lease without notice. However, Section H of the PPA clearly requires a written notice for termination. So if there was a written termination letter from Ramel on file, how, let's see. Is there a written termination letter notice from Ramel on file? If not, how does the city justify its repeal, its repeated public statements that Ramel ended lease unilaterally? So on previous meetings, this has been discussed, but no letter, no evidence has been provided. And the PPA clearly states that this is required. I think some of your statements on one of the previous meetings was that Ramel was, wanted to unilaterally terminate the agreement. But is there any written evidence of that? Any written evidence that justifies that? Besides the July 2nd letter? Because that's, I think, Mr. Cavani is referencing that on the termination of agreement he used to submit. Second portion that is really important is, the July 2nd letter alleges racial intimidation by Commissioner Honeyfield, which reportedly discouraged Ramel from continuing negotiations. What specific steps will the commission take to ensure future LEEDA partnerships are built in transparency, fairness, and accountability? And if these allegations are true and they can be proved, what consequences will be pursued? Those are my two questions.
Good job.
Sure.
I'm sorry, can you give us your name?
Yes, my name is Ronnie Meneses.
And how are, are you affiliated with Ramel Family Farms?
No, I don't even know the owners, but I've been following the whole process. I think these are questions that a lot of people have. There's many, many questions, and you know, these are just two out of, the whole questions I, dozens of questions. We as citizens, we're concerned about because we can discuss more later, but yeah, these are two out of many questions.
I'm gonna respond to a little bit. We did get a letter of termination from the Ramel Family Farms, and
When?
And it dated July 2nd.
Oh, now he's not talking about that one. He's talking about the four of that one.
This is the letter we're talking about tonight. His letter dated July 2nd, and it was, it was proposed by Ramel Family Farms that instead of negotiations, which were set for July 7th, that the agreement be terminated.
But prior to that, Mr. Mestes made several points that Ramel submitted or made, there was some verbal agreement, they said, but you know, again, according, if we're going by the rules of the PPA, it is required there's a written agreement. So why is this, it sounded like the city already made their decision prior to receiving this letter. That's why we're concerned about it.
Again, I'm gonna say mediation was offered, mediation was accepted by both parties. One party decided to pull out. The city was acting in good faith to come to a resolution. One party pulled out.
And I think, I mean, it's important to note with that, with not, you know, that was my thing last time, is we needed to have a mediation. We needed to sit down and figure this out. And the city fully understood that we would be, we're mediating, we're meeting some compromise in the middle, you know, there wasn't just gonna be, the city says this, he says that, one way or the other, but we were gonna have to sit down, and we were gonna have to give on things that we disagreed about, and it was gonna be a hard process. But obviously, instead of that, we received a letter terminating, and so because of that termination letter, we have to move forward with that ordinance, and there's a deadline that we have to have it done by the 15th. And so since we had a budget workshop meeting scheduled for tonight, the mayor's out of town next week, this, I didn't even, I mean, I, this didn't work with my schedule either, but this is what had to work with the timeline that we were given.
And the timeline was not presented by us. We were told by July 15th by Ramel Farms in their letter.
The city has the opportunity and the chance to reject that. The city doesn't have to agree on that, and that's correct. Correct me if I'm mistaken.
So if the city doesn't agree on that, then we would go to mediation, which has already been rejected. So I don't see how that, it's, we're back in a circle.
And to address your second question regarding me, I've never spoken to the man, I've never exchanged an email with the man, except for the meeting that night, when he sat on the cabinet over here, making hand gestures and faces at the manager while he was trying to read the ordinance. My teacher face came on, and I'm looking at the guy with the idea of, please behave. He took offense to that. That's the only interaction I've ever had with him.
That's the reason we're asking these questions, because something is stating in the letter, there's always two sides of the story, right?
Yes.
But as a resident of Raton, as a potential investor, and somebody who's been looking and analyzing what's happening around potentially opening a business, to me, that's extremely concerning, having any of our officials.
And I would suggest you go back and listen to the tape.
Watch it.
It's on, it's all video, it's all recorded. Everything is there.
All right.
Go watch it.
And when we're, the city commission meeting, just so everyone understands, is a, is a business meeting for the city commission. We take public comment. It's not meant to be a back and forth all the time, but we take, we take public comment. It's meant for us to be able to complete the business of the city. And people are to conduct themselves in a certain way. So I can understand potentially why Commissioner Honeyfield would give the teacher face, you know, because there was a lot, if it's on video, there's a lot of stuff going on in that corner while the city is trying, while Mr. Mestes is trying to talk. And I understand there's frustration on both sides, you know, that I can see that both parties are frustrated, and it's difficult. So that's why I felt like we needed to have that mediation.
Okay. My question is about mediation. So we've, we've batted it around quite a bit here, but I would just like clarification, because that's how we ended the meeting last time. Did, was mediation scheduled, or was it just, okay, it was scheduled for a particular date?
The third party and the state was involved.
Okay, and what was the date that it was scheduled? July 7?
Seven.
Okay. And was that with Mark Roper, the LEEDA expert?
No, he was not the mediator.
He wasn't the mediator.
He was not the mediator.
The retired judge was gonna be the mediator.
A retired judge from here?
From Las Vegas.
From Las Vegas. Okay. I just wanted that information.
When I say the state was involved, Mark Roper was giving input on what potentially could be some compromises at some point. But he wasn't mediating any.
He was involved in the
Yes, absolutely.
In setting it up, okay.
Give on this to the city.
I've had several conversations with Mark.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
In fact, the most recent one was July 4th.
Hi. Thank you for providing this opportunity for us to educate ourselves and help you as you move forward with these actions. My question, and I read some information ahead of coming to this meeting, that was presented by a source that, that looked like to be a city, a city development kind of a Facebook thing. So I'm not sure, but it seemed to suggest that this ordinance 1013 that created this lead agreement, this very first ever lead agreement in Raton, seemed to indicate that that was a pretty special thing, that that was pretty hard to come by, and that a lot of work went into making that happen. So my question, I get that all parties have reached levels of frustration to where, you know, it does not look workable moving forward, which is really a shame, because being able to come to Ramel Family Farms store in the heirloom shop is a beautiful place to go shopping and to be able to get local produce, and I really appreciate that, and I hate to see that also fall away with this whole thing falling apart. But my question is actually, does this repeal of ordinance number 1013 pertaining to the adoption of Ramel Family Farms LLC as an economic development project, does that completely obliterate the lead agreement? And for any other project that you have, you have to start all over again?
No. Each one, each LEEDA agreement is a specific project.
And this LEEDA agreement particularly is for the Armex facility and the greenhouse.
Okay.
And specific to Ramel Family Farms.
Okay. And, and just to throw out there as one final comment, having a greenhouse, vertical greenhouse in that facility that used to be the recycle center, I was a volunteer, I helped out in that place. That was a miraculous transformation that happened, and the tours that Facebook showed that the kids were getting to show kids what could be done, an amazing thing. It seems such a shame that we're losing that kind of a, of an, of a reality in our community. I sure hope that whatever happens, that we can make something like that continue. Because having a local food source where you go to the restaurants, or you know that the schools, the salads the kids are getting are grown right here.
Yeah.
That is an amazing thing. And that, I think, is part of the thing that people are up in arms about. We wanna see those kinds of things happening in our, in Raton. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
I said that the LEEDA agreement was specific to the Armex property and the greenhouse property, and I'll just add that the greenhouse is next to the Armex, and it was built with money that we had to use for economic development. And so we had proposals, and that was what was proposed and, and built, if that's fair statement.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to comment on the fact that I am a senior in Raton, the seniors in Raton get a special farmer's market card, those of us that can't afford fruits, vegetables at the real store. Ramel Family Farms has provided that place with fruits and vegetables for us, and you know, if you don't spend it, you can't use it. Well, so we get a card good from January to June 1st, $100, but if you don't use it, you can't spend it. Well, we do not have a fresh stand that comes here before June, therefore, I'm not gonna throw my state money away, I'm gonna buy all my veggies over there at the Ramel Farms produce stand. I'm just saying it's a real benefit for us seniors, and it's really a shame that, you know, we can't do something else. Thank you.
And I don't think anyone is saying that we can't do something else. We'll pursue, whatever happens here this evening, we'll pursue other avenues to make sure we can possibly find someone else to run it.
And I was actually hoping that Mr. Calabari was gonna be here tonight. I thought of proposing that we reject his letter and do another attempt at mediation. However, given that he's not here, I think we have to take what he's stating in this letter as his word, and he is hoping to be out of the Armex building, he's proposing by December 31st. And breaks my heart, I was, I'd like to have, that mediation would have worked, but we didn't, we didn't get to mediation, so frankly, I don't see, you know, without his permission to reject his letter, I don't see a path forward except to accept it.
I'm the founder of the commission.
I'll make a motion to accept the offer to vacate the Armex property and greenhouse, subject to the city attorney following up with Ramel Family Farms, to formalize the agreement in writing and to establish parameters for both parties.
We have a motion and a second to accept. Is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, introduction of ordinance, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 1013 pertaining to the adoption of Ramel Family Farms LLC as an economic development project. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, before you, an introduction of an ordinance that would repeal ordinance number 1013 in its entirety, which originally designated Ramel Family Farms Limited Liability Corporation as an official economic development project. Repelling this ordinance would remove all special designations, benefits, or incentives previously granted under the economic development framework, signaling the formal withdrawal of the city's support under that initiative. This is only the introduction of the ordinance.
Correct. This is only an introduction. Action will happen at the next meeting?
Actually, we'll need to advertise it for public hearing, so it would be the first meeting in August.
In August, that's correct. Any other comments, questions? I understand a motion to introduce.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 1013 pertaining to the adoption of Ramel Family Farms LLC as an economic development project.
A motion and a second to introduce the ordinance? Is there any further discussion?
Public hearing would be August 12th.
Public hearing on August 12th. Michael Anses is in audience, could we take?
I motioned, and Commissioner Giacomo seconded.
Yes.
Thank you.
Being it's an ordinance introduction, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure.
Mayor Proton Sagata?
Yes.
I got demoted.
Got demoted.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Chatterley?
Yes.
The ordinance, our introduction passes. Item C, workshop, work session, city of Raton, final proposal, proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this evening, we are conducting a work session to review and discuss the city of Raton's final proposed budget for fiscal year 2026. This session is designed to provide projections for revenue and expenditures, highlight key changes or initiatives, and to gather feedback from the commission prior to formal adoption. The proposed budget outlines the city's financial priorities and serves as a blueprint for municipal operations and services for the upcoming fiscal year. And I will yield any further to city chief of staff and treasurer, Ms. Michael Ann M. Tenucci.
Mayor and Commissioner, good evening. So at the last meeting, I did report to you that we received the letter that I provided to you, the approval from Department of Finance. That was for the interim budget, and then they also detailed out the requirements and the deadlines that we must meet to submit the final budget. So my office and my staff are currently in the process of still closing out the fiscal year, which ended June 30. Part of that is submitting grant reimbursements, which we're actively working on the next, probably for another week, to meet those deadlines that the state and various federal agencies have established. So part of the calculations that we'll be working on is anything that was outstanding as of June 30, we'll have several grants that would be recorded as receivables for audit purposes, and then anything that was received, whether it was services or goods, by June 30, we can still pay those invoices in the new fiscal year, but those will be booked as accrued payables at the end of the fiscal year. So still a little bit for us to sort out before we bring the final budget to you at the July 22nd meeting. So I've just kind of been keeping a running tab of things that I will need to change in the budget. I did find out from Raton Water Works that we will receive a residual transfer from them close to around $24,000. So that's always a figure that I await to plug into the final budget. So those additional revenues, we could discuss how those will be spent. I am proposing that we do have some increased expenses that were not included in the interim budget. One of those items is 0.5% increase in our PERA retirement rates. Those were phased in over the course of four years, and I actually thought last year was the fourth year, but after visiting with our HR director, she provided me the documentation to show that we still have one more year that goes into effect our next payroll. So that would actually equate to, sorry. I plugged the figure in, so it's almost $17,000 additional that we have to come up with to cover that increase for the various PER plans that we have. Another thing that I found out recently is the Windows 10, evidently not everybody's computers are gonna be compatible with Windows 11, so our IT department has provided me a spreadsheet. I think a couple were in the water department, but we have probably close to 20 computers.
Still on Windows 10?
Well, that were tough books for the police department that we got a grant several years ago to purchase. Most of our computers in our offices, those workstations will be compatible, and there'll be an update, but the tough books will not be compatible with Windows 11. So I think as of October, Windows 11 will no longer be supported. So I think you could still use them, but you would potentially be vulnerable because you won't be receiving updates. So that's kind of an unfortunate situation, because the grant was around $50,000 to purchase those tough books. So, and I'm sure, this was probably six, seven years ago, the cost of those has probably gone up. So that's something I'm trying to work through with the chief, but that would be kind of an additional, probably out of general fund reserves, or potentially, I guess, part of the water residual could go towards that. Have not received a figure yet from the electric utility if we'll be receiving a residual, but that would be something else that we could anticipate if we do for additional revenues. Other than that, you know, one of the things that we're, still is kind of an unknown, is the cost of the hood system at the senior center. So I'm kinda needing to plug a figure in for that, but we could always do a budget adjustment. We still have the $8,500 that we approved with the mechanical consultant on that, and most of that expense will hit in the new fiscal year. I'm trying to calculate what the costs of the new baby box will be to the city. I think it'll be pretty minimal, since the county is picking up most of the expense for the installation of that, but we are moving forward with that fairly quickly, so I'll try to get all of those additional costs. It's probably more of an annual cost that we'll pay on that baby box. You know, since the approval of the interim budget, we've been awarded You know, since the approval of the interim budget, we've been awarded several grants. We will be carrying over the Brownfield grant. We just recently started working on that grant. You will see outside in the lobby, at the Fourth of July festivities, we did have representatives from heirs here with a booth downtown collecting feedback from citizens. So we do still have the displays in the lobby and still encourage citizens to check that out. And there's some little cards and some stickers where you can write down your ideas. So we encourage you to do that as we move forward with the Brownfield grant. We also have the transportation grant, that's the thriving communities program that I'll put into the final budget. We did take action to eliminate three of our billboards, which will result in some savings, and I'll just plug that in either to annual events or contingency fund to go towards the summer events. Let's see. We also have the water trust board project, that's the filter plant tank. I'm trying to work on the figures to plug into the budget for that. I just recently received the final documents from the bond council, so I have all of the information I need. We did discuss Aquatic Center acid feeder, and so we've gotten the three quotes on that. It's going to be about a little over $7,500 to upgrade that system. We also were awarded the NMDOT co-op grant, that was in the amount of $60,570. The city will have a match of $21,523. We're hoping that we've accrued enough funds in the gas tax to cover that match. At the last meeting, you did approve the IT services agreements. According to the breakdown that I did provide, it looks like a little over $9,200 increase on that. I will report to you that when we were forwarding that back to the company, we did question they had listed three servers for the fire department, and that was incorrect. So we'll see a little bit of savings there, but I will be bringing that back to you for reapproval in the next meeting. Main Street, we, Jason particularly, was successful in submitting the application and the award for the depot grant, a little over $1 million. It was reported that our match, our commitment, will be $275,000. So we'll need to discuss if we want to take all of that out of the general fund or split some of that between general fund and economic development. And then one of the other things that we'll do, any grant reimbursements that we're submitting now in July, we'll need to do temporary transfers to cover the expense to the various contractors, like say, Molson Corbin for the FAA projects. We'll do temporary transfers till the reimbursements come in from these agencies, and then I rebudget that in the new fiscal year to pay back those funds to the general fund. So that's part of what we're calculating right now as we submit all of these grant I will report that we had not received the animal control truck, which also includes the box. That was $73,400, so I'll need to rebudget for that in the FY '26 budget. We should be receiving it, I would say, sometime in the month of July. And then we also did have a small reversion for the fire grant, that was the recruitment for firemen, just a little over $5,000. So some of that was, we just really didn't start our recruitment efforts probably until late in the fiscal year. So this next fiscal year, we'll receive 75% of the grant amount, so we should be able to expend 100% of that. So those are just some of the changes that I'll be putting into the system. We also did just recently get set up, thanks to Taran Jacomo, one of the special projects I assigned to her was getting us set up with the Samba driver monitoring system. We previously had it, the municipal league would subsidize that program for the self-insured members, but then last year they terminated that contract, so now the members have to enter into a contract individually with Samba. So we've recreated the database, and this is particularly important for fire when they do get their annual inspections. That's something that the state mandates, that they do driver monitoring of their personnel. So we've reset that up. The reoccurring charge is probably about $230 a month, and then there's additional fees for any type of reports that we do. So that'll be something new for this fiscal year. It was kind of nice when the municipal league was subsidizing it, I think our monthly payment was less than $10. I guess I'll stand for any questions that the commission may have or any suggestions for changes if you've had a chance to review the interim budget.
Questions? The 5% PERA increase, that's?
Point five.
Point five. That is just the employer side, an increase in the contribution, or is there one on each side of the equation, employee?
Let me verify that before I tell you. I think it's on both sides, but, I mean, of course, I only deal with the employer's side. It does affect me as an employee. Let's see. So yes, it is on both sides.
So they gotta, with this action, they gotta pay decrease then, but help their benefit later?
Right. So we had 20% increase in health insurance premiums this year, and then the employee will also see the 0.5% on their PERA contribution.
That was because the state was trying to get solvent in the PERA fund, is that right? Or?
Right.
So the state mandated that?
Three, four years ago, they were?
They phased it in over four years, so it started with FY '23, and FY '26 is the last. Not to say that they won't, maybe during the next legislative session, look at that But that's a pretty significant increase.
Has the police chief indicated to you, in your choices wise, did they like the tough books they received, or were they loaded with something else?
He's currently exploring his options. I did get an email the other day from a company that's on a state price agreement. I'm sure there's going to be a scramble to purchase these nationwide, just any computer for that matter. I think Enchanted Technology Solutions may have been the company that we got them from before, so they've reached out to us, and they have a couple different models available. So I haven't really talked to the chief or gotten any price quotes, so I can't really tell you how much they would cost to replace.
So being tech stupid, they'll be loaded with what program? I'm sure it's probably not Windows 11, it must be Windows.
Windows 11.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then whatever programs they need to do their duties, yeah.
Okay.
Keith, go ahead.
So my question, thank you, was, we talked about a lot of different needs at the last budget meeting, and that we might potentially need to prioritize because our general fund, we don't want to dip in too far into reserves. How is that looking in the budget? Are we going to have to make some tough decisions in prioritizing those different projects that need to happen? Because it seems like the total just keeps going up, and the only income was the $24,000.
Well, I think a lot of it's going to depend on what the final residual transfers are from both of the utilities. That would be a figure that I think would have some bearing on these discussions. I apologize that I don't have all of that information this evening. I think when we looked at the letter, or the approval letter from DFA, they did kind of put that cautionary sentence in there that we're depleting our budget by 21.92%. That figure is almost the exact amount of what we were proposing to dip into our reserves. So looking at our interim budget, that's where we had allocated $50,000 for a public works vehicle. We were anticipating $400,000, the abatement expense for nuisance properties. I can report that we had a bid opening today at 2:00, and we received four bids for the demolition of the JCPenney Biscotti Building. And our apparent low bidder, I think with tax, would come in about $209,000. So that's something that we had just kind of put an arbitrary figure of $400,000, not just for that project, but we are moving forward with the property that you had approved at a previous meeting, and I think those bids came in close to about 50. But I do know that we have a long list of nuisance properties that we'd like to address. We are looking to transfer $22,500 for the LEPF, police officer retention payments, that's our portion. The LEPF grant covers the rest. We still have these city hall repairs that we've kind of booked at $300,000, but without actual bids, I think some of these could be low estimates. The Schuler Electrical Project, obviously that one's still kind of on hold. We were looking to use the balance of the donations that we got from the foundations for that project, so that one right now is probably estimated at probably $400,000 out of general fund reserves for that project. So, you know, a lot of these are building related. We have the education building HVAC units, about $50,000. We do have the matching funds for the various airport projects. I know those have been slow to start, so most of that expense will all fall within the new fiscal year. We also have some park improvements that are carrying over from FY '25, about $50,000. I think the pickleball resurfacing project is almost complete. And then we had previously approved the transfer for a new ambulance, and we were going to be transferring $255,000 towards that purchase, and that ambulance is probably about $500,000. The estimated delivery is now January 2026. So the total of all of that was $1,576,964 coming out of the general fund.
Thank you.
And like I said, that list really didn't include some of the things that I was?
You were discussing, yeah. So it's a pretty huge hit to the general fund, making sure that we can keep that. We don't want to go down to the minimum reserve, we want to still have a little buffer, for sure, in case of emergency.
No, I don't know if it makes you feel better or not, but every year when we detail these lists, we're not real successful in crossing everything off the list. It takes us a couple of years to really address some of these issues.
By the time we plan and bid, and, yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Michael Lynn. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I guess my only other comment, if we could, this next year, schedule some dissolution of surplus properties. I mean, I agree with cleaning up some of this, the derelict real estate around town, but impound automobiles, equipment, real estate that is just sitting, really it'd be better if it was in a taxpayer's hands.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
I do, too.
So I mean, if we could really schedule something for this fall or next spring, then, I'm not saying garage sale, but.
Garage sale?
Yeah. Kind of clean out a few places at least, yeah.
I did have one question for Jason. Do you remember what the electrical work on the elevator at the convention center was going to cost?
Somewhere in addition to the $5,000, meaning 25K to get it compliant with current fire safety standards.
So I'll be looking, I guess, to see if we have enough funds in the non-promo lodgers types reserve to cover that. But until I close out the fiscal year and really look at our ending cash balances, I don't know for sure.
Oh, Michael Lynn, we do have capital outlay that's earmarked for the convention center that may not necessitate a general fund. We don't have a grant agreement yet, but if the grant agreement proceeds, though, I can absorb that into a grant in my profit.
So I do anticipate, maybe in the next week or so, we will receive the legislative capital outlay grant agreements from this past session. They've reached out to us to find out kind of who the signatories should be and the city representatives for those contracts. I know they're working on them. So we would be seeing the one for the animal shelter, there is another one that could be put towards convention center expense as well. So I'm just going to kind of put a question mark on that grant.
And I got two comments. One, I guess, before our next meeting, before we finalize this, if we could maybe get an estimate on those tough books, have a little better feel. And then on the senior center, the hood, since we have started a new fiscal year, let me reach out to ALTSD and see if they have emergency capital to fund that, because those ovens have been inoperative now for, what, six months? Yeah, so that would qualify, I believe, but our governor wasn't very generous this year with senior funding, so let me see what we can. We might be able to come up with something.
Are the emergency funds, is some of that like reverted funds at the end of the year? Is that how they?
Some of it is, yeah, what they claw back from projects that haven't been completed, especially on the senior program side.
They may not know that figure for a few more weeks.
Correct. It might be, I would say, middle of September before we have a good idea.
That would be great.
Because that could get costly.
Yeah. Well, when they reached out to Monica, or she reached out to them, I think at one point they said they could pay 50%, but that wasn't knowing if it was $60,000, $90,000.
Right.
I don't think anybody was anticipating it to be that high.
I'm not saying they'll completely fund it, but if we get our request in soon enough, if we have a number, chances are we'll get, yeah, maybe 75% will fund it.
I can't speak for the chief, but he may have already reached out on the tough books, so I'll follow up with him on that. Just one thing.
I know it sounds a little hokey, does the fire department use the same computers?
No.
I mean, we're not needing to upgrade theirs. Okay.
We won't probably discuss it in this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, I think it was 2019 when we switched services to Envision IT, most of our systems were purchased in 2019, so.
Year before I came president, yeah. Commissioner?
It's been brought to my attention that some of our employees continue to feel underpaid, even though I know in the last couple of years, we've worked hard at trying to get some increases. So I think, you know, right now, we just need to reassure them that library is one department that could use some raises, and I'm pretty sure public works and probably others, that we are going to continue to try and get their salaries up a little bit. We're not happy with them either.
I think that's been a passion of Mr. Mestes since he got here.
Yes, it has.
To try and get us where we can.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Michael Lynn, we look forward to the final proposed budget.
Thank you for all your work.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else that you would like to see in the final budget?
I do have one question. I do have one question. Is the, do I dare bring this up? Is the, the fireworks show, is that non-promo funds?
So this year's fireworks show, we had about six thousand dollars, which was the donation money from last year. And then the balance did come out of the non-promotional.
Do you remember how much that was? I remember it being about thirty-two total or something.
With this year's proposal, I think with tax and everything, it was closer to thirty-nine.
I'm just thinking, I mean, this is just one, one of many, many things that the prices are probably going up. And so, you know, thinking about that as we look at those non-promo funds, to know that it's going to cost more and do something a little bit, maybe a little bit bigger than this year.
Bigger? Yeah, we'll have to look at the non-promo fund. I think the difficult decisions we're faced with when it comes to that fund is so much of it is for building needs. And as all of our buildings have issues with HVAC systems and convention centers, a large maintenance line item in that fund.
Could we argue that we could use promo funds since we are putting heads in beds?
Possibly. We've never utilized the promotional fund, but we could, we could look at that. I don't know right off the top of my head what the donations came in at this year, but every little bit helps.
Just received some different feedback, and I think it was right on that we need to do a little better job after this year wasn't quite what.
I, I think that some of the challenges with the fireworks, just some of the news stories and things that I've seen with tariffs, and I think most of the fireworks come from China. They're not even manufactured in the US. There could be some supply issues next year, and the costs will be even higher.
I just know that's a big event for town, and people come expecting something, and it'd be nice to meet that expectation. I know that's a small thing in our budget, but.
I mean, some people are even discussing other towns are moving to drone shows.
Drones, lasers, yeah.
Myself, but lasers.
Yeah, they are pretty cool. Any other comments, questions? All right, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.